So, the council meeting is ordered.
Need president.
President.
Yeah, mayor.
Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Need a motion to set agenda. So, I'm going to motion to have signed it.
Signed.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Then we do put this in time, place, or special items on already on agenda with a time limit of three months. Discussion with State Representative Cindy Gold.
Well, hello. Um, oh, I'm gonna drop that down there.
I can just stand on the chair.
Um, I make a point as, you know, I've come to visit you guys before. And I try to visit all of the communities in my district at least once when we're out of session. And sometimes more depending on the issues that are going on. And I will be, like last year, we had kind of a, an impromptu meeting with mayors and, and, um, city managers about some of the bills that were coming up. And if I have time, we will do that again if there's something that is critical. So, one of the things I want to mention, we talked about a little bit before the meeting. There's some emails out about, um, the IFRS program. This is all hyperbole and fear mongering because there hasn't even been a report yet. They will have to bring it to the legislature if they decide to do that. So, nothing is happening. Someone overheard a conversation and it has caused tremendous turmoil. And unfortunately, that's a lot of what happens, I've discovered. I always knew that there was some bias in some reporting and all. But if you have a question about something, if something doesn't make sense, if it sounds like hyperbole, give me a call. You guys all have, know how to reach me. Um, there's a lot of stuff that goes through. I'm on local government this, for the, this session. I'm on local government, monetary resources, I'm the, the vice chair. I'm on judicial appropriations and transportation. And there have been a lot of things that have happened that, quite frankly, I'm personally tired of state overriding local control. And there are bills that came up, there are some things that have happened that... I, I called some of the city mayors or administrators that I had on my phone right away and said, "What do you think about this?" But I need your input because what we hear in Des Moines is from Cedar Rapids, quiet cities, you know, um, Des Moines, Council of Love. We don't have, and I try to be a very strong voice for my community. Part of the problem we have is that they lump us together because we are the second largest county in the state. Next to, you know, we have the second largest city in the state. And when they're passing, um, when they're looking at appropriations, they want to limit it to all but the top ten, um, counties. Well, I say, no, that's fine for Cedar Rapids, but I have little towns. Limiting it by the county population does not do justice to the rest of the state. So, I'm constantly fighting for that. And I'm also trying to stop some of the statewide issues that because they have a problem in West Des Moines, or Ankeny, or in, you know, Davenport, then they want to make everybody follow this rule. But it doesn't apply to us, you know? And so, if you guys hear about that, let me know. Because I see it on, on local government, but it might be in some other committee. Commerce Committee. HHS, Health and Human Services. There are some other, other committees that are trying to mandate things that are going to go on in our small towns that don't make sense. Property tax is the big thing that we've tried, we've worked on. I talked about it last year. And everybody who calls you guys, or me, and their property taxes are high. And they don't realize that forty to sixty percent of their tax bill is going to the local school district. And then there's a substantial chunk that's going to the county, or it's going to emergency management, or it's going to Kirkwood, as they look at all of these taxing authorities. Two bills were proposed last year. Now, they didn't make it out of committee, they just were leaked. So, that you would have, one was from the senate, one was from the house. And both of those bills, one of them rolled back the assessment to, reduced it by twenty-five percent. Well, we're still going to have the same unknown that you guys have been dealing with, that you don't get when we deal with the rollback, you don't get the number. So, you know how to budget going forward. And my first year in the house was when they made that mistake. And they said you had a rollback of fifty-four percent. And then they said, "Oh, no, wait, it's gonna roll back fifty-six percent." Anyway, you had two percent different of what they told you from what it actually was. And my proposal is to freeze assessments. If there's an improvement on the house, the assessment goes up. If the house sells, the assessment goes up. But then slowly eliminate the rollback so that you would know what your budget is for the next year, and the next year, and not put an artificial cap on what Lisbon can do. The other proposal that's in the works, I'm hearing about it a lot, is just cap it two percent, or cap it whatever, some artificial cap, regardless of what the assessment is, that the taxing authorities cannot charge more than this percentage on the tax bill. Well, that doesn't account for any of the improvements you might want to make, or like to talk about a water system, if you would need to put in new streets. If the community decides they want to have a new park, or put in a swimming pool, it takes away that ability of the city, or the taxing authority, to ask their taxpayers, "Do you want to pay for this?" The other problem we have is that everybody who calls me and complains about their taxes, I ask them, "What are you willing to give up if you want your taxes to be lower? What do you think the city shouldn't be providing? What do you think the county shouldn't be providing? Have you ever gone to a school board meeting and asked them what they're doing?" Most of them haven't even voted for a school board. And that's the biggest bulk of their taxes. So, what I'm asking is if you guys, as you see the proposals come out, I am not on Ways and Means. I get the bill when League of Cities will get the bill, and you guys will hear about it, because I'm not on that committee. But if you hear something, if someone talks to you about this proposal, or that proposal, I want to know how it will impact Lisbon. And if you think that this is a positive thing, or even something you can live with, like that seven eighteen that passed in twenty-three, I've already apologized to you for voting for it because I was told, "This is gonna save millions of dollars for your taxpayers." Five dollars here and five dollars there, but it put a tremendous burden on the smaller communities in the state. It didn't, wasn't a problem for Des Moines or Cedar Rapids, but it was a real problem for a lot of the small communities. So, anyway, do you have any questions for me?
I guess one of our biggest things for our small communities is, you said, you know, they're eliminating Lisbon because we're in Lynn County, you know, or... But it also, like, when we do try to get something, it always goes to a big city.
I know.
You know, and they get, they get all the money. Or, well, I'll just take our sewer for example. We gotta follow the same sewer guidelines that Cedar Rapids does. How we, they can afford it, we can't.
That's, that's the, that's why I requested specifically to be on local government so that I could be a voice. Now, I'm only one of a hundred and fifty legislators, but I can be kind of vocal sometimes, in a positive way, but, but defending our small communities. And that's, you know, I need to know. I've heard about, one of the other things they want to do is, there was a proposal to completely eliminate TIP because of talking about all the abuses of TIP. Well, in my communities, I haven't seen TIP being abused. If it's being abused other places, maybe we need to put stronger guidelines around it, but not eliminate it. So, there's some things that, you know, they're saying, "Well, we're gonna do this and, you know, take a, slash it instead of doing it with, as a skeleton." So, I'm trying very hard to keep that focus. Are you aware, so I fought this bill, and I don't know if you guys are, I'm gonna tell you right in front, I don't know if you're in favor of it, opposed to it, but the accessory dwelling units, they passed, the state law was passed this year, that you must allow accessory dwelling units, whether the city wants to allow them or not. And I use examples of where I had seen it abused, and that I believe each community should allow, you know, through their ordinances, allow it or not allow it. But that was a statewide law that passed this year, and I fought it. Stopped it last year, but I couldn't get it stopped this year. So, went through with a few modifications, tightened it down a little, but it still went through. So, that's a law that now applies to Lisbon, whether you wanted it or not. The other thing that, um, happened before I was on, uh, before I was elected, was nightly rentals. Statewide law that says a community must allow nightly rentals. It might not harm communities like Lisbon, but there's a lot of communities along the Mississippi that are small towns, like Lisbon. And twenty percent to thirty percent of the homes are now Airbnb's, or VRBO, or whatever. And that has destroyed their community because people came in and bought the houses, they're absentee landlords. The houses were less expensive than houses in, say, California or New York. So, they bought these as investment. They don't live there, they have some manager, but it has destroyed the fabric of the communities. But that was a statewide law. I took up the law as a freshman and said, "Great, I want to roll this back and say that a community can say only a certain percentage of the homes that give you that opportunity." You would have thought I was selling my children to Satan, if I, because the real estate community came in and said, "You can't do that." And VRBO and Airbnb representatives, big huge corporations, came in and fought it. So, anyway, I'm trying very hard to be your voice. And those are, those are two of them that I have seen happen, that I am afraid can have some detrimental impact on communities. It sounds good on paper, but what happens when they build that accessory dwelling unit so grandma can live there, but then grandma passes away, the family moves, and now they've sold two units on one lot, and they become rental units. And you can't do anything about it because now they save their nightly rentals. And I just find it terrifying. So, I'm gonna do what I can to see if we can get some tighter, tighter rules, rules around that. Give you back some jurisdictional power over those things. Anything else that I can? I don't mean to be, you know, be negative, but these are two things that I knew would, would, could negatively impact our communities.
Appreciate it.
Anything else that I can add with? All right.
Thank you very much.
Uh, discussion possible actions in reference, payment number three to Lynn Haven Land Improvements for Sports Complex grading.
So, you should have that, uh, invoice in front of you, the copy, um, here. So, is Lisa on?
No.
No?
Nope.
Um, so this is payment number three, and, uh, minus the retention, uh, it'd be twenty-eight thousand forty-four dollars and zero cents. So, we would need to make a motion, uh, for that. And, um, we're seventy-eight percent, um, of the complete payments for that. Remaining is the seed, um, and silver, silver will also touch move.
Motion?
Motion to have banned it.
Motion to have seconded.
Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for chemical feed building, well, number five. The motion is on the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Approved or opposed? All right, on the public hearing.
Good evening, uh, well, number five, as you recall.
Yeah. Sorry about that, I should have put it back up.
So, well, number five, we recall, I had been drilled a while back, we did some tests on it. Uh, we have a lot of corner down that well. What we need to do now is build a chemical feed building, which is where we're going to have the chlorine disinfect. And we're setting this up so that we can also have some storage there. And as you may recall, also recall, we were looking at iron, and we were concerned that we were, eventually going to have to treat this if it didn't drop. So, this building is expandable in the future, if we want to put in some filtration. Uh, this is located at Jefferson and Third, on the northwest corner, out of the sports complex. They've already created this site as part of the sports complex grading. And the next step here is to take bids. So, we have it out, and we've advertised it to contractors, um, in the package. You'll see there's an addendum in there, and that sets the bid date back to next week. Uh, we did receive some feedback, if we were looking at this, that there was a lot of activity and the contractor, um, bidding last week. So, they, they felt that in order to get more attention, if we could push it back, they'd be able to give it more time. So, this is out for bids, but, uh, this is, uh, the public hearing, give the public a chance to ask questions. Uh, the reason that we drilled another well, as you may recall, we had a well up on the railroad, um, just, uh, over by the elevator. And, uh, that one was a railroad well. The railroad came in and they closed all their wells. We also had some issues with contamination that we're gonna end that up. But with that lease disappearing, the railroad's gone through and closed most of the wells that were leased wells on railroad property. And, uh, that one's no longer an option for us. And prior to that, we also had a well out by Public Works, and we had some issues with that one years ago. So, that was abandoned. So, we're down to just two, one here at the fire station, and one out at the church, now past Dollar General. So, uh, this, this is to give us the firm capacity so that we can get to do the produce during a, uh, peak period if we have a larger well on service, which would be the church well. And, uh, we've had that situation come up before, luckily it hasn't been during peak usage. Um, we have the issue and had some, some time for this, stressed our system. So, this, um, we received a grant through Lynn County. It's our funds and, uh, a million dollars, and that's what's going towards us to pay for it. So, um, the estimate on this part is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And we previously spent about three-hundred thousand on the well to get that drilled and tested. So, we're, we're pretty close where we need to be with it. Once we get bids in, we'll know the numbers, but that's an overview of the project. And if the public has any questions, or if the council has any questions, I'd be one of the, if it doesn't.
Any questions?
Sounds good.
Thanks, Dave.
Motion to have a public hearing.
Motion to go out public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion seconded on favor?
Aye.
First comments?
Uh, nothing to add.
City engineer.
I don't currently have anything else that we are working on, but I know we're assisting with, uh, the city with the, you know, land gas installation. Um, we went to sidewalk crossings here and there that we're working on for ADA compliance. So, I'm continuing to work with Brandon and Travis on that. And, uh, I've been watching the activity out at Elite Stone. If you haven't been out there, the building is, uh, is up. Uh, the framing anyhow, or the roof, walls, they have a bid to go to finish that enclosure, but it's taking shape pretty quickly, and it starts working on some utilities along the side grating. So, we've been, uh, stopping by occasionally just to check in on that. And there's some utility extensions, some street extension that the city will be doing as part of that project that we're assisting Travis with. So, I'll have.
Any questions, Dave?
Thanks again.
Public works.
Um, we have most of the long white and yellow painted for the streets. Uh, we're gonna pull off to do Sauerkraut Days this week. Next year, I'm gonna push to do that in June, instead of, I know in the past, they've always wanted to wait until right before Sauerkraut Days. Well, with us gaining old thirty and the amount of painting we have, it's just too much to try to get done in a short period. So, we'll just have it done sooner in the year. Um, starting again next week, we'll finish crosswalks and make sure everything's done that way for school before that starts. Um, just reminding you guys that the pool is closing Wednesday at eight o'clock, and will open again Monday at ten o'clock. We did get, uh, the unit we needed for mowing the ditch on the west end of Main. And we got some on the east end of Main, and we're gonna touch up and then down by, um, the pond, the station. Get that area cleaned up before this weekend. Um, and then last thing I have is, I've been in talks with our lab and the DNR. We're having some issues with some samples we pulled, and the results not getting back to us. So, we're working on that, and I'm sure I'll have more of an update for you when we get it all figured out.
Anything else?
See the brush is piling up again on the freeway. So, this is a very hot topic item, as you well know. We've, we can't put yard waste through our chipper, because it'll dump it up and it'll plug it. So, people are confused on what is yard waste, what is brush, and when they pile it together, it's more time consuming for us to try to pick it apart and take the brush out of there. So, what we do is we pick the whole pile up and throw it in the back of the dump truck. This brush pickup, we ended up with, it was well over twenty-five dump truck loads of stuff we could not run through our chipper, along with, there's about ten, fifteen toner trucks too. So, Brian and I are working on a, on a better way to move forward with this starting next year. Um, I figure, especially this, this, this month is worse because, A, we're trying to get ready for Sauerkraut Days. Everything's falling right at the worst possible time for it to fall on. So, for us to waste extra time doing this, and we obviously don't want to leave it because it's gonna make the time look bad. So, yes, the ingredients we just were gonna go up, we're gonna pick up a couple more piles. But that's another reason why we're not paying.
No one, we never picked up grass clipping, I don't understand why people think it's okay to put grass clippings.
So, uh...
It's not your fault, I just see this.
No, I mean, like, some, for like John Street, there's cars there, all, I mean, bumper to bumper cars there. So, for, we gotta get out, walk around, grab it, end up walking to his driveway to walk down to get out because we can't get in between the cars. So, everything's just snowballing up on us right now with that, so. We'll get her.
One thing I'm gonna possibly try is, uh, maybe purchase some yard waste bags that we can sell here at City Hall. I think we can get them for cheaper than you can buy locally for at a store. And the thought with that is, if the public wants to come in, rather than make anything off it, we're just gonna charge whatever we paid for them. And then, uh, maybe have some sort of handout or a brochure to help explain and educate, uh, the process. Uh, because, you know, the ordinance clearly states, you know, four-foot chunks, how they have to be set. Um, you know, all the definitions, everything, and, and ever since the duration of kind of, that's what we feel, we kind of lost it. So, um, we're gonna try to get it back under control so that, um, we can do it and try, try the educational piece for it. So, I think I'll be purchasing some yard waste bags, hopefully people come down and explain to people, so.
Oh, and the last, last thing I do have is, this is for Doug, I know he's gonna ask, the streets will be out tomorrow.
I wasn't looking at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen it, but I wasn't looking at it.
Well, that'll be, that'll be running around tomorrow and Wednesday.
Anything else? Park turner.
All right, um, for our hundred-and-fiftieth celebration on Sauerkraut Days, we started a scavenger hunt today. Uh, we had a good turnout for that for the first day. We'll do that Monday through Friday of this week. Uh, it's a history scavenger hunt. So, our first one was the Gettysburg Boulder out in the cemetery. And we had a lot of kids and families go out and check that out and take pictures. Uh, we'll have our movie in the park like we do every year on Sauerkraut Days on Wednesday. It'll start between eight-thirty or nine o'clock at night. Uh, slow pitch tournament again this year will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday over at the park. Uh, we have registrations for flag football and soccer, they finalize on Friday. We still have quite a few late ones coming in, but we are up to like a hundred and seventy kids, so that's a pretty good number. Uh, we will have back-to-school night at the City Park on August twentieth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. That's where we just do a meal for families before they send kids back to school that following Monday. Um, one other thing I have on here is, you might have noticed online, the, the high school softball coaches are putting together a fundraiser for field improvements, uh, Bunning Field, our softball field. Um, this is gonna be no cost to the city, and pretty much what it is, is, uh, just field improvement, grading work, stuff like that, make it a safer, uh, place to play. Um, if you've been over there, you'll notice that, uh, in front of both the dugouts is grass. And then you have the lime infield in between the grass. Uh, most facilities have just lime all the way up to the dugouts. So, what their plan is, is to take the grass out and make it, uh, a whole lime surface playing area. So, um, like I said, no cost to the city, uh, they reached out. I thought it was a great idea. Um, again, a lot of facilities around us are like that. Um, makes it safer, better playing surface for them. So, um, I figured no cost to the city, if they want to raise the money and, uh, make that improvement. I didn't feel you guys would have an issue with that, but if anybody has any concerns or anything, let me know. Um, and then Travis covered the splash pad, which will be closed Wednesday night, will not open till Monday. That's all I've got.
Grayson? My brothers.
I don't have anything for you.
Police chief.
Uh, the report's in the packet. He is, police chief has worked internally, so he couldn't be here.
He was. Fire chief.
Um, getting ready for Sauerkraut Days this week. Um, starting Wednesday night, we'll start washing the streets in preparation for that. And then, uh, two-thirty, I believe, Saturday is the bathtub races. Uh, five thousand water balloons have been purchased. So, looks like it's gonna be a nice warm day for that, so, uh, should be a good turnout. Uh, that is all I have.
For all you people that haven't ever seen bathtub races, you need to see them.
Anybody else can, fire chief?
What time are those bathtub races?
Two-thirty on Saturday.
Is that later than usual?
It's about a half hour this year.
Don't get too close to them. Trying to play the...
Break you one.
Used to be one, and then it moved to two, and now it's two-thirty.
Same as earlier.
Um, been very busy, as you can imagine, the last couple weeks. Um, the gravel lot at the sports complex, if you, uh, are out and about, go take a look. It's, uh, pretty large and should be pretty nice. It's all done, installed. Uh, so we'll use that as the overflow lot while the, uh, complex is under construction. As Dave pointed out, um, we finished the documents with the auditor in Elite Stone on the, uh, uh, TIP agreement. And, um, Travis is hoping to start some street work here towards the end of August, um, out there for the extension. So, we start out there. Uh, the water main project is now complete. Uh, asphalt was done this week. We also, uh, did a few patches around town, um, highly traveled areas that, um, had dips in the whole spots. So, uh, those are complete, and I just want to thank the guys for that. Um, it's probably about a seventy to ninety thousand dollar savings in-house for doing that work. Um, the grass is growing, uh, shouldn't have an issue for Sauerkraut Days. So, um, I appreciate all their hard work and, um, dealing with the weather, the heat, and all that. So, uh, thanks to the guys for that. Southeast Lynn had the community breakfast. Um, as you probably here and noticed, it rained about two inches during that event. Uh, but they kind of scrambled, moved everything to the fire station. I don't have their numbers on the turnout. I know right before the community, uh, church service, they had a pretty good rush of people, so. Um, but everything went as well as it could for that. Um, just thanks to all the volunteers for, um, helping out with that as well, uh, setting up and all that. Sauerkraut, our hundred-and-fiftieth event at Sauerkraut Days tonight, we're doing a history walk... a history walk, actually it's going on right now. They did, Laurin was wilder, historical discussion at the library, happened at six tonight. Tomorrow's the golf cart poker run, it's a community, a family event. There's like eighteen stops through Lisbon and Mount Vernon, so if you want to do that, it's five to eight, you got to register at Bo Dylan's, it's free. There's probably gift card bundles for prizes, there's about three hundred dollars worth of gift cards that'll be given away, so if you want to do that, golf cart, UTV, and obviously if you want to just go by car, you can do that as well. Check the sauerkraut days website or the sign out front, they all have the schedules for the one hundred and fiftieth and the sauerkraut days event. Sauerkraut days Thursday, now at Sports Complex, so we'll be getting that ready to go on Thursday. I think that is about it.
Any questions for Brandon? Christine?
Hi, I'm Sue, just been helping with the sauerkraut day prep. Marshall's on vacation, so I was pulling double duty in the office this last week, and just working on the annual reports.
Anything for Christine? Nathan?
Just thanks to everyone who's been working on the one fiftieth and sauerkraut days, the one hundred and fiftieth committee, the sauerkraut days committee, city employees, you always make our town look great before, before our annual event, Parson Rec, I appreciate what you guys do for it. Of course, library events, those are awesome. Brandon and Christina, thank you for what you guys do, and happy anniversary to my
Everything but his wife.
He still doesn't say happy anniversary.
Mike's a happy anniversary.
Mike, for John.
Yeah, thanks for the water main project, that's a great savings, good job. And it was my fiftieth wedding anniversary just a few days ago.
Rock on.
That's all I have.
Well, on that being, today's our thirtieth, thirty-fifth wedding anniversary also.
We got married the same day.
Yeah.
Thirty-five years. Wow.
Wow, you're a banger.
Looks like you're doing the same thing for your anniversary as I am.
I don't think thirty-six is coming.
All I got is ladies, hope you enjoy sauerkraut days, I hope it's going to be great weather, so, they're one hundred ribeye sandwiches.
We have at least four.
What time they closing the streets down?
I believe a soft closure at noon for the main street, and then I think about four o'clock.
Ninety-seven in the afternoon.
And then just a reminder, rides on Sunday from ten to two, it's a wristband, you buy them from the carnival, and then they're closing the time capsule as well, so everything will be shut down by three o'clock.
You guys need to talk to Pelo and tell him, don't do it the same day. You went around longer.
Glad they springbilled that.